Councillor Dow, who is to give the invocation, and by the way for the record, councillor Dow is ill, councillor Cronin is out of town, out of the province and out of the country, she's in Europe. So, in place of councillor Dow, I will offer the invocation. We're trying to have a move forward. Where you going? We need this council meeting. "We're grateful for this beautiful land and the trinity, the freedoms and the democratic practices which allow us to speak freely and to represent the wishes of all of the people in the community. May we be guided and blessed in our endeavor to represent the wishes of the community." And that we... We ask that choice's blessings to be upon this land, upon the harvest, and upon all those who are in need of special comfort at this time. Do I say these things asking my blessings in the name of Jesus Christ, do I?
Amen.
I've got a couple of additions to the agenda. We have a piece of correspondence here requiring a decision. Town of Carstairs, it will be listed as an addition, 7D, D like dog. And you'll notice it is, it is this piece of information requesting a decision for us. We have number 11D, a piece of correspondence from the Alberta Utilities Commission. That will be 11D.
D.
D like dog. So, kind of have motion to approve the agenda.
Just a second.
In which additions?
You said the AU, sorry, did you say the AUC should be E, shouldn't it?
A.
The other one was D, so that one should be E.
Oh, I see.
No, this is in the correspondence.
11D.
What was the 7, what was the 11?
One was 7.
7D.
Oh, 11D, oh, sorry, sorry.
7D and 11.
7, 11.
Councillor Court moves adoption of the agenda with those two additions. I will call that question on the favor. The agenda is adopted with those two decisions, two additions. We have a delegation in a few minutes, and so we'll go down to number five. Entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of August 20th council meeting, only by councillor Smith to so adopt. Any discussion on that motion to adopt? Councillor.
Just have a couple of changes or additions. On the second page, let me see, okay. I've got a couple. Okay, this one, I thought councillor Cronin would have made if she was here, but on motion 1379, moved by councillor Cronin to revise remuneration, where the increase does not exceed 25% in the calendar year. I think she would be pleased if that was 25% of the proposed increase, so that somebody reading the minutes doesn't think that we're going up to a 25% increase in the years.
I'm not sure I see, all it says is, increase does not exceed 25% in the calendar year.
Yeah, if they could change that to 25% of the proposed, of the proposed increase, because that was, that was actually her motion. Because there was a proposed increase in fees, and she said, let's keep, let's only take 25% of that.
No, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm aware of that, but the way I read that, it says the same thing, that the increase does not exceed 25% of where we're at right now.
Well, it could be read as 25%, a 25% increase. I don't think anybody wants, you know, is proposing a 25% increase. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand. Okay, all in favor of amended? We'll take that amendment?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, the other one was when we talked about the garbage by law, motion 1376. I would just like to add that we discussed providing vouchers for the first year for over bag limits. We did discuss that, just like to add that, that we discussed providing vouchers, a number of vouchers.
Whose motion was that?
It wasn't, well, I don't know if that was part of the motion, but it was, it was discussed, that we provide some vouchers, I'd just like to have that added to the minutes.
Didn't that find its, did that find its way into the proposed bylaw?
Motion?
No, it's not part of the bylaw.
Not part of the bylaw, but was it part of the motion? I don't remember.
No, it wasn't part of the motion.
But we discussed it.
But we can add it as part of the discussion.
Thank you. Okay, that was, that was the change.
Okay, did you get that?
I haven't.
Because I get to sign off on those minutes in two weeks. All right, so all in favor of the parole change by regional councillor?
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, so, we like a motion for adoption of minutes of the public hearing, August 20. Is that under the same concern?
No, no, it's okay.
Moving approval?
Approval.
Okay, so, any discussion? Again, so for the motion to adopt the minutes of the public hearing, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, so now, 6A is in regard to the remuneration policy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, the chair will honor the motion to approve the remuneration policy. It has some changes from what it was initially made. Councillor Dow wanted to be on record as sticking with the initial recommendation of that committee, but again, that is for the record. The chair will honor the motion, and councillor Edmonds moves the remuneration policy be approved. Any discussion on that motion to approve the remuneration policy? And that is for the aforementioned, where the changes were going to be 25% per year for the next four years, as to what was proposed. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. The chair will honor a motion for third reading of the garbage and recycling by law with the changes as highlighted in yellow.
Who moves third reading?
Councillor Smith moves third reading. Any discussion on third reading? You have those, you have those highlighted there.
We did make some amendments, so that's all legal. There's one other change I just felt that would be good in the wording. Under three garbage receptacles, in the text, that they say waste receptacles, and I just thought to keep that consistent with the definitions, so that there's no confusion. I wondered if that could be changed, where it says waste receptacles, if that could just be changed to garbage receptacles, in order to keep that consistent with the definitions and with the title. There's one other place where it says waste receptacles.
Well, but then there's also 1G, so it talks about refuse receptacles.
Yeah, well, they, you find refuse receptacles as bags, and garbage receptacles as garbage cans, and then they use waste receptacle, which doesn't appear anywhere else, so I just thought if that could just, if that would be okay, just to change that to garbage receptacles, where that appears, and do we need a, do we need an amendment to change the wording?
A motion to amend.
I'll make a motion to amend that, to change where it says waste receptacles to read garbage receptacles.
To be consistent, then, we're going to have to go down and revisit 1G, because it uses the term refuse receptacles.
Well, no, that's, that's okay, that's defined. Refuge receptacles is defined in the definition.
So, what's the purpose of having an additional category, an additional definition?
Well, we have, that's why I say we have garbage receptacles, and we have refuse receptacles, we don't have waste receptacles defined anywhere. And that's why I've been saying, let's just keep it consistent, and just reword that as garbage receptacles.
Okay.
In 3 and in 3E, there's a, where waste receptacles to garbage receptacles.
It's been a long time since you extended, much time, talking trash. All in favor of the amended change there? Okay, Carrie's, with those changes, the chair will honor a motion for third reading with those changes. So moved by councillor Edmonds, all in favor? Third reading of the aforementioned changes is passed. We need a decision, 7A, the motion that is sought is indicated here in our package, and it has to do with tourism, specifically the Mormon Trail Initiative. And so, if you just look over that proposed, proposed motion, 7A, the motion that they're seeking is, you can, you can see it there.
Collaboration.
And I'll ask for a motion to, as written here. And, okay, so for the record, be it resolved that we authorize the Town of Raymond to participate in an application for the collaborative tourism visioning and action plan project, Town of Raymond, McGrath and Cartston and Village of Sterling, submitted by the Town of Raymond under the regional collaboration component of the regional collaboration program, and further that the Town of Raymond applicant agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of event funds. So looking for motion.
Mayor Scott, if I might just, that's the motion for the Town of Raymond, the second motion is the one that's subject for the Town of Cartston. The Town of Raymond is a managing partner in this regional collaboration grant, and the B that's highlighted for, one is the motion that's required for the Town of Cartston.
Okay, be it resolved that we authorize the Town of Cartston to participate in an application for the collaborative tourism visioning and action plan project.
I'll make that motion.
So moved by councillor Court, any discussion on motion? All in favor? Motion carries, is that all we need on that? Okay. So, under 7B, we have the municipal development plan questionnaire. Now, if you look into section 7B, it has to do with town funding. Now, at a risk of going into a little bit of involved or detailed discussion, I think we're going to go back a second and invite the delegation, Lydia Beazer, to come to the podium and give us her presentation, and address her concerns over some actions being proposed by the Alberta Registry. So we have to welcome Brad and Lydia, and we should probably allow you a good 10 minutes, if you need that, and then that is going to allow us a good five minutes, or whatever's left of your 10 for any questions.
Perfect, that's what I was hoping for. So, I'm happy to be here tonight, this is the first time I've come to a town meeting and had this position, but I appreciate you letting me come and speak to you and share with you what's happening in the registry world. I am hoping that after I tell you what I'm going to tell you, that you will be willing to give your support and help in any way that you can, as elected officials, to use your influence in helping us keep the registry in Cartston. So you might be saying, well, how is it come the registries might disappear from Cartston? So that's what I want to share with you tonight. So, the government, the PC government, is trying to de-privatize the registry services and move them to online services. How are they going to do this? Well, Minister Vular has a vision of an enterprise-wide online portal, meaning he wants every service that can be done to go online. So right now, our association actually has an online service application, where you can go on and register your vehicle online, or pay your current fines online, but the government wants to repatriate that and take it back. And so in March, they're going to cancel our contracts in those two parts, and that's the contract with our association. So that's different than my counter, my front counter, okay? However, it would take about 75% of our revenue from our association, so it would, you know, severely hamper our association and make it hard for them to continue to be in association. But it also will trickle down in effect to our front counter. So, we don't want that to happen. We don't want the PC government to be able to repatriate and take back their services. So, let me give you a little bit, oh, let me tell you this first, I don't want the government to kill my competitor, right? And not, not me, there's anybody across the province. We'd be competing with the person who sets our fees. They tell us how much we can charge, and then they're going to become our competitor? It just isn't going to work. So let me give you a little bit of history. Thirty years ago, the government made a deliberate decision to look at businesses operating successfully in small rural communities and get a registry servant or servant of our business in, with our businesses. So they came to us, and we agreed to take the registry services at that point in time. Then, at that point, they were paying us commission. Then, in 1993, they decided to privatize. And so at that point, they decided to give us so much per transaction. So then we started getting a fee per transaction. So you can see up here on the chart, it's kind of hard for you to see, but if you look at the very bottom, you can see that in 1994, we were getting $2, and the government was giving $50 for transaction. And so then, it continues on, and you can see in 2013, we're getting $9 per transaction, and they're getting $75 per transaction. So you can see in the pie chart above how that, you know, how that works. So the government is really getting most of what happens right now. Now, for the last eight years, we haven't had a fee increase. Thank you. Okay. So, for the last eight years, we haven't had a fee increase, and we've been lobbying for a fee increase for the last five, and it has to cross the legislature before we actually get a fee increase, but they haven't given us one. So 20 years ago, we were privatized, and in this effort, it was to reduce the cost of the delivery process and get the government out of doing business. And it's been really good, it's worked quite efficiently and worked really well. So, before privatization, there were 149 private offices, 11 urban offices, making 160 agents across the province. After privatization, there's 101 small rural offices, that means with less than 5,000 population. What is the population of Cartston, may I ask?
About 3,500, 3,600.
So we kind of fit in that group. The only thing that might make it a little different is that we have the blood reserve to the north of us, which really does make a big difference for our office. So, it's been pretty good for us, I mean, we've been making it, but it's getting harder. So you can see now, back then, there were 250 terminals, and now there are 900 terminals, that's why you don't have to wait in line so long to get your registration. So it's working pretty good. So if we go to the next slide, you can see that the cost of doing business in rural Alberta is quite expensive. When you have an adjunct business like we do, it actually costs more for us to deliver the service than if we were standalone. And you might be asking why? Well, the reason is, is we have to have more qualified staff, so that they can do two jobs. So we have to have somebody smart enough to be an insurance agent, and smart enough to be a registry agent, and so they have to have tons of certification to deliver that service, and so, of course, wages is the most expensive thing, and so, that is what is, why it's so much more expensive for us to deliver it than it is for the cities. Of course, the cities get a lot more transactions than we do, and so that really helps them out, too. So, we hired KPMG to do this analysis for us, and so this is an analysis based on KPMG. If you look at the very bottom one, which is the transactions, if we do it by transaction, you can see that in a community less than 5,000, the total cost, let's see, hang on, I'm now, I'm lost, let me look up here. So, based on the business model, if you have an adjunct business, and you have less than 5,000, it costs $7.90 to deliver that service, we're making $9. For a service, so we're making $1.10 per service that we deliver from our office. If you look, based on transaction, it costs $10.85, we're making $9, so we're losing $1.85, okay? So that's kind of where we're at, as far as a registry office goes. We're actually somewhere in the middle of those two, but it's because we have the more people to the north of us, actually, that help our registry out. So, the reason I'm giving you this information is so that you can make an informed judgment on what might happen if we lost our office in Cartston. And of course, what I'm looking for is a letter of support from the mayor and council, so that, you know, with, so that the government will listen, and they will know how important it is for us to have a registry office in Cartston. One thing that I want you to know, too, is we do support an online service, we realize that people want to have access to online, and they need it, but we can do that, and we have given a proposal to the government, it's called the SGI model, where we will, we're happy to do the online service, we just want to be the ones to administer it. We don't want the government to take it and put this portal in place, and then have to hire somebody to, you know, it's just going to cost them way too much money, because it really is cheaper for them to put it through the registry offices across Alberta. So if there's 101 rural offices across Alberta, and we're all suffering, how long do you think we'll stay there? You know? So it might just start disappearing. So then what happens is, your children, children in the community who are 14, who want to go get a learner's test, their parents have to drive them to the city to get their learner's exam, and it takes them, on average, three times before they pass. It's a difficult test. If you think of the seniors in our community, it's hard for them to get downtown, and so for them to renew their license, or for them to renew their registrations, it's going to be hard for them. You think about the people to the north of us, and how much service we can give to them, there's many of them who don't drive. For birth certificates and other important essential services that we offer, it's going to make it a hardship for them. So, you know, Brad and I ask ourselves every year, why are we doing this? Why are we still a business doing registries? It's not because we're making money, it's really because we don't want to see this essential service lost in our community. We realize it is a service to the community to have it there. And we're, we keep hoping that the government will give us a fee increase, because it would make all the difference for us to stay viable. And actually, the government realizes that their rural offices are struggling more than the urban offices. They've talked and talked for five years about different ways that they could make it work and make it happen, but they haven't come up with solutions, and now, they're going to go online. And so what happens is that takes our transaction falling away from us, and so the easy transactions, which are vehicle renewals, will lose, and so that's what helps, you know, pay for the hard transactions, which are the face-to-face transactions, which require proof of identity, you know, if you're making a change of the vehicle, those are going to require face-to-face transactions. Those are still going to have to be countertransactions, they're not going to be able to be online. But how can I stay in business if I don't have all of the transactions? If I don't have the easy and the hard? The easy transactions take about 80% of our business, so that's the business revenue, it's 80% we get from the easy transactions. So, so that's what we're here for tonight, is to ask for an endorsement from the mayor and council, to put something together, to tell, to, that we would like to send to the minister and to others, we want to circulate this letter to gain support for them to rethink what they're thinking they want to do, so that we can keep the registries in our community. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Lydia, I appreciate your presentation. Councillor, any questions to ask Lydia?
I have a question. Under the government system, how do they plan on getting the tags to you?
They will mail them to you.
So you can't do it on the last day of the month?
No. And so, for rural Albertans, that's going to be, you know, that's going to trip them up, right? For people in the city, you might want to do that, rather than drive downtown or to the registry office. Yeah.
Can you, can you just explain, you say you're, you're still in favor of online, but through your registry, how does that all?
So what happens is, we have a model, business model, it's called the SGI model, which is modeled after the province of Saskatchewan. So the registry connect, or our association, would administer it. And so, when people wanted to do online, which we do have, you know, we do over a million dollars online every year, so when people come and want to do that, they actually choose which registry office they want the income to go to. And what happens is, if you live in Cartston, or if your postal code is T O K O K O, that's going to be the first office that pops up, and then you choose whether you want it to go to that office or another office, and that's.
So it's kind of whoever, whoever's postal code you put in there type of thing, that she is, or gets the, gets the revenue for that transaction type of thing, is it?
That's kind of it.
So if I was in Cartston, and I said, oh, I don't like them, I want to go to the Lethbridge office, and I did that, would the Lethbridge office get that money instead of the Cartston office there?
Yeah. So it's not really my idea of the best solution either, and yet it is, because people need to be able to have access to online, you know, as a, as a people, as a population, we want things at our fingertips. So we do, that's the best solution, and so the revenue will either come to me, or if it was, for example, final statistics, first certificate, it actually doesn't come to me, it actually goes to the association. But that keeps our association viable and functioning, which is the mouthpiece between us and the government, and keeps us together as a registry agent network, so that our offices are together, much like an insurance council, or the Town of Cartston, there's a group that kind of governs what happens. That's what our association does, and so we need people to run it, and so we have to have revenue there to keep us together.
So Lydia, do you foresee, if this happens, the necessity to cut one job position in your office?
Two and a half.
Is that all? So multiply that by however many they would propose to cut in the province, there's going to be a thousand jobs lost.
Probably. Probably, I mean, they might move to the city, but, you know, what the cities are going to have to do is make their counters bigger, and again, the cities don't have to pay them as much.
So Lydia, in your information here, you're asking us, because you've got all the information that we need.
In your letter, Mayor Scott, if you could use the words like essential services, backbone of our community, you know, something that is a real strong, that shouts to the government, hey, we need to keep this in our community. Honestly, we have really considered closing our doors for the last two years, because it's just not viable. But they keep telling us, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, and now they're doing this.
I just see this as another attack, if you want to call it that, on small communities, rural communities, centralizing everything into the city again, so you all have to drive in the city for, and for seniors, like you said, that's, that's a difficult situation for them, and it seems to be this government's policy to centralize everything, from healthcare to everything else.
Everyone says it just.
And this is where we're headed with this, apparently, too.
Right, we aren't the first one to go, I know, but we can't really go there, or we're going to really lose it, and so. And so, you know, I probably put, we put over a million dollars gross through our agency a year. You know, it does make a difference to the banking in Cartston, because the more money the banks can put through, you know, they're gonna stay. We put, you know, we put over a hundred thousand dollars' worth of wages out every year. You know, when you lose that kind of stuff in small community, it makes a difference.
Absolutely. Any other questions, council? Thank, Councilor Edmonds, or the other...
Is the plan of the government to save money by doing this, or just centralization?
I think they think they can deliver it for less money, that's what they're saying. But they, for some reason, they have this vision that they want everything centralized. In fact, in the newspaper article that Minister Bure put out, he said that we want a one-window portal for all Albertans to be able to access. So that would include their high school transcripts, their Albert Health, their social insurance number, their driver's license, everything. Well, that kinda scares me. I'm not sure I want all my stuff in one spot. Right now, we don't do social insurance numbers. We now do do Albert Health. There is a lot of information our registry offices now have, that there's still pieces to the puzzle that aren't in the registry offices, which I think is a good thing. Because if I had their social insurance number, their passport, and a few other important pieces, you know, I would be much more worried about staff security, like just security. You know, you have to be so much more careful. I mean, we already have to do police information checks and so forth, where everybody that comes to our door, that works there, from our janitors to our IT, that, you know, scares me to have everything in one portal. I don't want my high school transcripts and everything going late. I don't know.
Councilor Creed?
I'm aware that you've been having this struggle for, you know, a while. I think, I remember when they were having the DC leadership race. I think Brad was there talking to some of the candidates, and I almost gathered then that you were on the verge of closing shop just because of the struggles. Is that kinda what you're explaining, like, you were... Have you just kinda been barely making it then for the...
You know, we could use that space in our office to make money. We could put something else there, and we could make some money. You know? Right now, I would have said, but right now, we're just meeting costs. We're not in the red, but we're just meeting costs. And why, the opportunity cost has gone. The reason we're there is a service for the community, because we recognize what a convenient advantage it is for all of us who live here.
Well, and see, there's other spin-off for the service you render. They might go to a local eating establishment to dine. They might gas up their vehicle. Every little endeavor, every little enterprise that gets run out of town, run out of business, is a blow to that community. Pretty soon, everybody has to go to the city for this or that or the other, and so it is a concern. Councilor Spence, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I understand both sides of the story. I mean, from a business owner's point of view, you don't wanna open the doors and sit there for ten hours for free and not be able to make any money. You know, but as a consumer as well, I'm always looking for, you know, saving some money, and you do see the cost of insurance and utilities and everything rising, you know, especially utilities under deregulation and things like that. It's, I think it's got a little goofy from where they actually thought it would be, but anyhow. But I mean, yeah, there is a, you know, so from a business owner's perspective, I know exactly what you're talking about. And I know I don't like to open my doors for free and sit there for nothing. So I mean, you have to, you have to make your money. And if you don't, then I would probably do the same thing, close my doors as well, because...
But do you think the government's gonna make more money? They're gonna charge you more, because their employees cost them more. They have, they do, and government wages plus they do benefits that are different than ours. It's not gonna be cheaper for you. Last year, the government raised the prices fourteen dollars for transactions. They didn't give us any. It's been eight years since we've had a fee increase.
Yeah, and that's the thing, yeah, I mean, if they're doing it to try and save people money, which sometimes usually never happens, they intend it that way, but it's like spend a million dollars to save a dollar, almost is what is kinda how the government works, so. But, yeah, I know where you're coming, and I feel for you for sure, so.
Brad, you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, just don't forget, it's not about, it's not about the money. We're not here to say, "Hey, because we can't make it, we're not gonna do..." You know, we've done things to change, and that's our problem. There is a lost leader to all of this. There isn't anybody that doesn't come to Carson, that doesn't come through my door. And so obviously, the insurance side of things does benefit from that, so let's not forget that. But at the same token, that would be like, you know, if I make money over here, why should I have this portion of my business not making money and using this to supplement it? When it, I know that if I took it out, I would probably make just as much over here on the insurance side as I would here. So it really isn't about the money, it's about the service. And I don't believe the government's gonna do it cheaper because of the fourteen-dollar increase that hit you in April to do a registration that was them preparing themselves to be able to pay to do what they're trying to do for next March. It's all a front. And of course, the delivery system received no benefit of that rate increase when we've been begging for it for years. Our wages have gone up, but that's a whole bunch of other issues. Yeah, we need more money, but that's between us and the government. We just need you to say, do you, as a council, feel like this is a business that should be in the town? And if so, put that on paper, so we can take that to the powers that be and say, quit messing with it.
Well, and the way I see it right now is there's already an online service for it, as well as kinda what they wanna do, so I mean...
Yeah.
If that goes through the association, I mean...
Yeah, it's just that the association is managing that. And then therefore, those that are members of that association then benefit somewhat from that, because we know they're gonna go online. We just don't want us to lose twenty, thirty, forty percent of our business to online. And Lydia sits on the council for Alberta. I don't know that we're gonna personally be financially affected as much, because let's face it, there's a lot here that don't do computer things. But in ten, fifteen years from now, it could be fifty to eighty percent will be online, and then we're what?
In three years from now, we'll lose our association. And if you lose your association, you lose...
Lose your voice, you'll lose any power, clap your hands.
So it's just not gonna work. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
I hope that you will give us a letter of support, and...
And we will certainly have that discussion, and you will probably hear from us tomorrow.
We didn't ask for money.
You always ask for money.
You owe me.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Council, if there's any questions, I'm saying for the discussion, if we could entertain that motion right now to send a strongly worded letter, if you'd like, to the government. Mary, you...
Just one comment, and I probably should make a little. Brad and Lydia are here. We did ask for a position from the ministry to understand, try and help council understand where the ministry is coming from, and we have not received anything today. We got an email that said we should be able to get you something shortly, so... I don't have a response from the ministry.
I'd love a copy if you would, if you're...
We thought it was important for council to see both sides, so then you have a balanced debate, right?
That's, yeah, I think that'd be, I think that'd be a good idea. Like you say, I mean, there's always two sides to a story, but I mean, you know, it'd be nice to hear the other side before we make a decision, so.
Keep in your fore mind, it's important for you to have it here.
Yeah, but just to be informed and to make the, you know...
I wonder where they're coming from.
Well, yeah, that's right. I mean, so I mean, yeah, like I say, I appreciate it, but I think that's a good idea, that we wait for that, and then...
You'll find you won't get a lot of information from that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Traditionally, we get kind of a generic response, but I think, you know, we at least ask for it, right?
Because we can't, we don't even know really how, what, and what they're really doing. We just know that they're going to do something in March, that they're not renewing, and they're not going to be sharing that online. So they're taking services away from us, but you don't really know, because they're not being, they're not being upfront with us. And they haven't been honest with us for a long time, though.
They announced it in the paper, actually, that they were going to create this portal, which was kinda slap them in the face to us and A&amp;A. And A&amp;A is our partner, right? Because A&amp;A also delivers the same services we do. So they announced in the paper that they had built this portal, and that they're gonna go online and cancel our contract in March. They've been talking to our association about that, and we have been to meetings after meetings with them. I don't know, it's been very...
One thing that is very typical of government is they raise the rates, like you say, and they're just building that coffer of dollars so they could get up to speed to do this.
Yep, so build a portal, and, yeah. I don't know, it's interesting.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. So, council, Councilor Creed?
I think, you know, regardless of what they may say, I would like to make a motion that we do write a letter to the government expressing that we value that service in our community, and that we feel that for many people, it's an essential service in our community. As they may, you know, people that, we still have a lot of people in our community that aren't computer literate, that need to be able to have a face-to-face application. And whatever the government does, we do not want to lose that service in our community. I think that's the nature of what I'd like to have expressed.
Quite frankly, council, there's just one more reason not to get downtown. Just one more reason not to come and patronize a local establishment. Just one more reason that small towns are facing a battle. And if you wanna throw in the discussion surrounding the centralization of ambulances, and then you've got the meddling in the pharmacy situations. So, any other, Councilor Creed has made the motion that we send the request to a strongly worded letter, right? Any other comments on that?
Well, like I say, I mean, it's always nice to see two sides of the story before you make a decision, because a lot of times when you assume, you know, what happens with that. So I mean, as a council, I think it'd be prudent and wise to take a look at both sides. And like I say, I understand, you know, I mean, they could go online with the service that they have right now, and push Lethbridge office, Lethbridge office, and they still get nothing for it, but... But I, myself, I mean, you know, I see both sides of the story.
I wonder if we could just, I don't think two weeks is gonna make a huge difference. If we don't hear back from whoever it is in the government in two weeks, I would hundred percent support your letter. But I kind of agree with you, what you're saying to them. Maybe we should see what they're gonna say first. Either way, I don't wanna see that service leave the community.
No, absolutely.
Whether they have a good, whether they think they have a good reason or not, I don't wanna see that service leaving here. But I think maybe just for, I don't know, maybe appearances sake, we see what the government's gonna come back with. I don't think two weeks is gonna make a huge difference.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, maybe we give it a little time.
If we can have it on the... Should we just table, come have the motion table for two weeks? Is that, except, that's probably the procedural best way to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Or does somebody else need to make that one?
Somebody else makes that motion. Councilor moves to table that motion for two weeks. I am just not impressed. This government has a very, very poor track record. And that's it. So, all in favor of the motion to table this issue for decision for two weeks? Okay, that motion carries, thank you. So let's go into the municipal development plan questionnaire. If you will look at section seven, and it's about town funding. Now, this document on municipal development plan is going public for folks to give their input in just a couple, three days. It's gonna be delivered to each home, to each residence. And we need, if you have any additional ideas on section seven for town funding, we should have those forthcoming right shortly, as in tonight. It could, Mary?
If you want me to speak to Mayor, this has been vetted by the municipal development plan committee. And the only section was section seven regards to the questions that council would want us to ask about funding for the town. Now, we took these questions from your visioning sessions and your goals and objectives over the next three years and the upper term. So if we've miscalculated any of those questions, or if there's something that we've missed, we just need your feedback on that, so that we can get this questionnaire.
It's being sent out through via mail, then?
The intent is that we'll deliver it door-to-door. We're trying to get as highest percentage of responses we can, so that it gives us some good information. It will go out with a self-addressed envelope, so we're hoping that by delivering it door-to-door, it'll, we'll get a better response to the service.
You're just leaving it at the door, or you're gonna talk to residents, or it just...
We'll try to hand-deliver.
Okay, so, yeah, 'cause I know some of the other surveys that we've sent out or whatever, I mean, they've come back, and out of thirty-five hundred people, maybe what, a hundred?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's how many's come back, and that doesn't give us a very good...
Well, and that's the point. We'll also have the ability to, for people to do this online. So they'll have a number of options.
So the questions arise, council. Do you see anything in here, section seven dash twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, that you want to add? Councilor?
My concern is, will people totally understand, for example, should the town pay the cost of developing that for residential purposes? Will they understand what that cost is gonna be? How much it would cost if the town developed everything? I just worry about that, they're saying, "Oh, yeah, I think the town should do that. That's a good idea." But do they really understand the cost of that? What I'm saying, that's my only concern on that, is do people really understand what they're saying yes to or saying no to?
Well, I'm saying, I mean, yeah, 'cause a lot of, you know, we would probably like to have, you know, a lot of things in town.
It's gonna cost five hundred thousand more? It's not such a great idea.
Do you wanna put in here, should we cover the swimming pool? That, of course, would probably get, raise your eyes, for sure. So as you look through this, council, anything here, seven, twenty, or twenty-one, or twenty-two, that you'd like to see added? I know I've got my opinions on a lot of them. And so I have the freedom, 'cause I've got exactly the same number of votes as anybody around the town, which is one.
I think the questions on there are fine. I think it gives a pretty good...
The intent is to give future councils some general directions to the wishes of the community. So, you know, you establish your own goals and priorities from this as we move forward, or in your council, yeah? So nothing's written in stone, it's just trying to get some feedback.
Do you need a motion?
Comments, questions? Do we need a motion? Okay.
That's all right. Every survey has its limitations, and, but I think, I don't think I could find, you know, could do a better job of coming up with one. I think there's a lot of good questions, and some things that should promote some thought and discussion. I hope, but I hope we get a good response from it.
Okay, thank you, council. All right, we have, Councilor Creed, the whole recommendations, the three-year strategic plan, and we need a motion as a result of the discussion on that. From Committee of the Whole, Councilor Creed, please.
I'll move that we adopt the, approve the three-year strategic plan in principle as promotion of the council committee in the whole.
Moved by Councilor Creed, any discussion on that motion? All right, so I'll call that question in my favor. Motion carries. The next part of the CCW recommendation, AMDSP grant application. This is a motion by Councilor Creed that we participate in the mapping system. It's available by Bill Crede. Any discussion on that motion? And we need a motion for that, sorry, on that recommendation. That's the one I wanted to use, recommendation. Motion on that, please? Motion on that, please? Counselor Creed, you made the recommendation.
I'll make a motion again, then.
Question, on this?
Okay.
This AMDSP mapping, is that the same thing that we're getting from Orson GIS, or is it something different?
It's something different, it's actually spatial data that's used by emergency services throughout the province.
I'll make a discussion in the fire emergency services on this, and they're getting for rural addressing and locating things in the area, that's good.
I will call that question, and on my favor, that motion carries. So now we're in the new one, that's in addition, 7D. We have, and you've got it here, and we have a letter from the town of Carstairs. We have a husband-wife team of RCMP who have been transferred. One of them will go to Carstairs, one of them will go elsewhere. Typically, the transfers are conditional and contingent upon the sale of their home. Carstairs, in talking to them, they're down six officers, and so they're kind of up against it. We have some concerns. We're waiting for a couple of officers to transfer here, but they can't come till their house is sold. There has been a detachment commander selected from, I believe, Northern Alberta, and that transfer is, again, pending the sale of his house. The fact is, and I think this is relevant, to be fair, do we want to get in the business in sort of response to Carstairs? They're, they're saying, "We will buy the house," so they can transfer. And then they'll immediately, you know, miss the house for resale. So then you might end up with a merry-go-round. So then if we are short officers, maybe we go buy someone's house somewhere else, which we don't have the money to do, quite frankly. But it is a fact from, from discussions with Carstairs, that detachment is down six officers. They have times a day, when, unlike us, I mean, we have no coverage at certain times in the late night, earlier in the morning, but they're suffering severely because of their shortage, Counselor Creed.
Well, I must be misunderstanding, I always thought the RCMP purchased those homes for their officers that were transferring, is that no longer the case, or was it never the case?
No, that policy has changed.
So they used to do that, okay.
That may be one of the problems, why they're not burgeoning force in terms of their hiring. I would consider seriously, if I was an RCMP officer and I transferred...
Every five years.
Every five years, and I could not, could not transfer until I sold my house, that could be a problem. So, Administration, do you have any...
Just, the reason this is before you is for, under the Municipal Government Act, for another municipality to purchase land or assets within the town of Carstairs, they have to have approval of our council. So it would require a motion to approve the purchase.
We certainly don't see us doing this in foreseeable future, I hope. Buying houses, so we get the RCMP officer here, that's...
I don't think this would obligate us to do that.
No, it doesn't, but, but you see, we just don't know if, what we'd be up against, and we were down six positions. Marion?
In speaking with Corporal Brown today, he felt that they would still have sufficient resources here to cover what they needed to. They would be having to work some longer shifts and maybe some additional shifts, but they're comfortable that they would be able to cover that. He says that their operations manager is very aware of the circumstances, and they're working to try to rectify some of these problems. But Carstairs is in a position where their, their RCMP officers are covered from other jurisdictions, so it's not just affecting Carstairs, it's affecting a number of surrounding jurisdictions as well.
Well, I would assume under contract with the provincial government, they're required of a certain level of leasing.
So, do you have any more questions to ask of the Chair or of Administration? This will need a motion, and if there's no motion, there's no action. So depending on what the wishes of council happen to be, this will take a motion or not, if council does not wish to approve this, Council will shut.
So, sorry, Mr. Chairman, so, or, sorry, sorry. So how does this, so how does that work? Why does, why did they need approval from the town of Carstairs to purchase land? Like, what, what is it that can create that?
Yeah, under the Municipal Government Act, a municipality is not allowed to purchase land within another municipality without that council's approval. Normally, what happens is it becomes non-taxable. In this case, they've agreed to pay full taxes on the property, so that's not an issue, will still receive a full tax on the property. They've, they've been put in a very difficult position, is what's happened. You know, the RCMP policies and the agreement with, with service from the province and the RCMP and all of that is a much bigger issue than just simply them purchasing land or a home within our municipality. But I would hope that if we were put in a similar situation, that the municipality we were making a request to would understand the need. Six officers is a substantial amount of loss to a community.
Carson, about seeing some of this, Carson. Let me just make an anecdotal comment. Several years ago, Westwood School Division building used to house the county administration. County purchased the building, which I don't remember whether it was Johnson-Pontiac, and then Five Star Lodge, or whatever it was. The county purchased that building, and so by law, they need our permission to do that. And interestingly enough, because it was a private building at the top of the hill, and it's now owned by the county, it went off the tax rolls. So just a little anecdotal information, background-wise. Grandview Nursing Home didn't, was never on the tax rolls. When the Westwood School Division bought it, it still is not on the tax rolls. So just to give you some indication of some of the things that happened. So is anyone prepared to make a motion, if not? Counselor Creed?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, 'cause I can't see blocking them, they, they need that. And I imagine it's going to be temporary, and it'll probably be for sale for the next RCMP that moves into town, but it's just to facilitate them receiving, you know, being able to get their person, you know, and they're paying taxes, it's, I think, just a procedural move in order to facilitate what they need to do, so.
And then our reaction in kind is one of courtesy, I'm sure. So a motion made by Counselor Creed to approve the request by the town of Carstairs, any discussion on the motion? I'll call the question on my favor. That motion carries, thank you. Yeah, let's hope that we're never that short, that we have to take the dire step of investing a quarter million dollars to buy a home, so that, in another community, so that an officer can, can transfer here. But there are two transfers pending to move into Carstairs, both pending the sale of their homes, till they can move into Carstairs. Financial report.
We don't have one of those.
We don't have one, okay. Four-year scrutiny, Town Council motion list, bylaw slash animal control report, native liaison officer, when has he finished his term, liaison officer?
I believe the end of September.
End of this month, okay. Any questions, Counsel, on the Town Council motion list or the bylaw officer's report?
Bees, are we picking up bees now?
I do.
It's that question mark, bylaw enforcement thing, is that part of our deal now?
I'll have to ask him.
Well, I guess if they're an annoyance.
Bees, do we, do we exterminate bees, or, I just see that with this control, bylaw.
He gets called several times. You notice he put a question mark? We didn't know how many bees.
He didn't count.
He didn't count.
He was a stat.
Okay, so let's jump down to the correspondence. Municipal Affairs have sent us four letters, they're there. One of the things that really quite caught my attention, and Marion, now, if I can use Marion as an example, when she built her new home, and I don't know Court's experience, I guess I should think back on our experience, 'cause our home's only about five years old, and Court's is about a year old, kind of thing. Do you have a new home warranty on yours?
At the time, no, I just went through the contractor.
But now, this is legislated. We can't, as a town, we can't unlicense anyone to build a home, or issue, sorry, issue a permit.
Issue a building.
A building on a home, the builder's, does not participate in the new home buyer protection. So that's an...
That's by the insurance.
Interesting piece of information.
Would that apply to someone's building their own home?
My guess is, probably not. If you, if you are the stated contractor, anything to add to that, Marion?
I haven't checked into it in that much detail. I don't imagine if you were the homeowner and you're the contractor, that you would be required to have it. But I have to double-check on that, Counsel, because I don't know.
Yeah, this will be a lot of added cost to people building houses, they're gonna have to pay the, on top of it.
Oh, yeah, if we get that along, that's for sure. When Marion built her home, there was not a home contractor that could offer a warranty, but they were fortunate, they trusted the builder.
That would seem like me.
Now, there's two, there's two pieces of correspondence dealing with the letter that we sent in support of the Schmidt Foundation's land development tariffs. We've been CC'd on the letter back to Russ Barnett, the mayor, and Roy Carroll, the reefer. So, letter here from Maria Jensen, having to do with yard waste.
Again, if we could, maybe it's an education thing, that, again, these people are expecting the garbage men to pick up all their lawn, and that's, it's never been, that's always been a motto, that he doesn't do that, and yet people seem to assume that's the case.
Wouldn't it be appropriate to send that kind of a letter back to this person, if you would please? Just a nice letter that says, "Hey, it's really never been..."
He's just done it out of goodness for his heart, it's what he's done now, we just never...
And it's also having a negative impact on how much waste we take to the transfer station, which ends up in the landfill. Marion?
You just missed one letter from Municipal Affairs regarding the Regional Collaboration Grant.
I did, didn't I, thank you for bringing that to my attention. So we have the Regional Collaboration Grant information. That's, that's the one that is specifically for waste management.
Best practice.
And I, I'm actually quite pleased that that's gone, that it's been approved and going through, because in my mind, that will be nothing but a win-win situation for everyone involved. And then there's a piece of public relations there from Bell Canada.
Maybe, yeah, probably will contest the Maria's letter, I'd like to comment on that one from Mrs. Jensen there. And, 'cause it kind of goes along with, with our best practices study for garbage. She raises a point that maybe we need to think about, that there are probably a lot of seniors in the community that don't have the ability to, to carry their lawn clippings or yard waste out to the transfer station. And, you know, since we're now enforcing that, it might be something that, as we do our best practices study, we might need to look at. Not everybody has home teachers that can do it for them either, so, you know, and, you know, you offered for one lady that was in here, says, "Well, I'll carry her." And you can't do that for everybody either. So, I haven't got any motions right now on this, but I think we should just, maybe in the future, kind of look at that situation, and see if there's a way that we could address people that don't have the ability to remove their lawn clippings and their, their other yard waste.
In, in... Counselor Court, go ahead.
It's difficult to be Mr. Everybody for everybody. I mean, I can, in this particular circumstance, I know her sons have trucks, I know that.
Both of her sons have trucks, one lives right across the road from her.
Well, I understand what you're saying as well.
I understand your other...
But it's, I know, I know the town of Raymond, for example, they used to do this on a monthly basis, they'd pick stuff up on the curb, but that became a real headache for them as well. But you're addressing, you're bringing up a good point, I don't know how we saw that, I don't think the town should have to be responsible for moving everybody's garbage, everything, everywhere, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
I understand the situation being difficult as well.
Well, I've been taking a lot of stuff to the area there, composting, and it's amazing how quickly in the last, well, since we put out the letter, how much more stuff is going there. And I've seen people with just a garbage pail in the back of their trunk, and they're all seniors, and they're taking it and dumping it off, so.
It's a difficult thing, I mean...
You know, I, I think I speak from experience. My mother's 92 and a half, and she lives in the lodge. There comes a time when people who, you know, stay in your home as long as you can, stay in your home as long as you can. But one of the things that determines how long you can stay in your home is the, the yard work that's required. So the taxpayer shouldn't have to pay for my mother to look after her yard. Well, fortunately, I have a brother that live right next to her, has a truck, and so the taxpayer shouldn't have to pay for that. Maybe that's the right, for my mother, she decided it's time for me to move into the lodge. And she couldn't look after her yard, she paid a young man to come and mow her lawn, or a neighbor came and did it out of courtesy, and her yard waste was taken care of by a neighbor. And, and, you know, being sympathetic to, we have a fairly senior community. And, you know, there comes a time when you're gonna need help, and the taxpayer shouldn't have to be the one to help.
It would probably, I mean, if we had a system for picking it up, it would probably be, effectively added to the, you know, collection fee for it, but... And maybe, maybe we just watch and see what happens over the next while, if people are able to handle it, and if it, if it becomes an issue, then, you know, and maybe we could look at, you know, a service that would, would probably, would be paid for, but, yeah.
Well, I mean, something such as, in the summer, you know, third week of August, we'll pick up your trash, third weekend in September, we'll pick up your trash. I know when we cleaned out the squash for my yard, for my garden, and I don't have a big truck, but it was a mountain. So the answer to that is, don't grow squash, if you don't have the hallway, if you don't want to have the hallway, the big jungle. And we had about four hills of, uh...
Some kegging.
Is it, well, no, four hills of...
I know, I know those vines, well, anyway.
It's just a different world than a lot of our older, even when I grew up, and I mean, you just burned it when I was a kid.
Yeah.
Now they won't let you do that, I understand their concern. But I think it's also very important that we, they understand that hauling away your lawn stuff has never been part of the bylaws, it's just been part of a courtesy that maybe Darcy died.
It's never been...
I mean, that's not really what you're supposed to be doing with it, you know, for...
Okay, so Bell is just a, just a promotional piece. I have my own opinions about Bell, I pay them a bill every month and get virtually nothing in return. In fact, I went for about a year and a half and did a bill, and finally, they noticed who I was, and phoned me, anyway. So I said, "Well, gee, you take my money, but it'll be virtually no service, so, all right." Alberta Utilities Commission, talking about the rescheduled hearing regarding the Goose Lake transmission reinforcement line. Nothing involved in that area is even close to us, it's all mostly in County Willough Creek, their MD Willough Creek, pardon me. But if you happen to own land out there, you, and want to present, you have to make your written submission requesting that by the 20th of this month, so.
Can I have a, ask a question on something similar to that? Whatever happened to the transmission line from Mexican Cudi over to wherever? That people are all upset about. were all upset about?
It's been put on hold. We discussed that last meeting, it's been put on hold.
They had some information. I said it wasn't there at that meeting.
Yeah, it's in Committee of the Whole meeting last week. But it's been, it's been delayed, it's been put on hold.
I'll make a motion.
We are officially adjourned. Councilor Smith moved to adjourn.
The funny thing on this Bell one, too, is that Verizon's not even coming to Canada. They bought something else. They put all this...